Six thirty on this meeting. Six thirty, I call this meeting order, the Johnson Council. We do have more present uh at this time, but I'm going to ask. Yeah. That's really. To be a. Latest of the United States by the Texas flag and everybody. Pastor. It's hopeful and July ministries are the electric.
But we just. Say it. And do the. You can. That's a. You know. Taxes. On for the city.
Well.
Lord Jesus, we thank you for your goodness and your mercy. I thank you for each person here tonight, each elected and appointed official. We pray right now, Lord, that you would season each word spoken tonight and salt rapid in your love. We pray right now, God, your divine perfect will be done this evening. In Jesus' name we pray. Everybody say amen.
Thank you. Question. He has got a question related to. This four days. Second break for twenty one three.
So far, we're at. Almost sixty percent of the fiscal year revenue generated at fifty eight point eight percent. Spending tiers at sixty one percent. Overages are accounted to. Front loaded contracts and agreements that carry over through the year. Now, there were no real significant expenditures um. Of this month, had a few little. Pickups here and there with some parish to make uh one of the fire trucks that I'm already aware of. Be happy to pay any questions that you have, but we uh. Most every department is under budget currently. Sure they'll try to change that, but we'll hold it back a little bit. Happy to take questions if you have.
If I had any questions? Hey, number two, this will be a discussion on bond election.
So the. Went back and took a look at some of the information that we got from the bond election business and some of the people that. Came up with a few things that kind of attribute to the the. Turnout. I think the biggest concern that came was that it was two weeks following um. The appraisal district's presentation of of numbers and. I think the concern and response of the way some of the values all over the counties, my understanding, and in most every county in the state. Um significant impacts. I know some of them we have visited individually um and along with myself had some pretty significant increases. That and I think the fact that obviously with no organized opposition, uh the information that we put out was relatively. Um small. Uh limited to answering specific questions that came up. And then, of course, with our Facebook page, Internet and and the quarterly newsletter that went out, all obtained, had that information on it. We had some people that were not aware that it's on the ballot. We had some that confused by the language. Uh we had some that really weren't um. Really didn't understand what it was, I guess we talked to. And then I think some, obviously, I think just out of concern with the tax issue that it just simply didn't pass. And so the options are going forward. Um I think that um. Maybe we should back up a bit and and take things like we have in the past. And what I would like, we've got some other things that are coming up. That we know we're in the line uh where. A bond might be appropriate. And what I'd like to, for the council to consider, is allowing me to put together a small committee. To like we've done in the past, let's take a look at these things, get them rated, give. Some some outside voices in um to have some conversations and to make some recommendations to the council going forward. Whether that's something you want to pursue in November, whether that's something you want to wait till May, just whatever you want to do. But there are some things that are coming up. Um, of course, we we do still have the challenges of City Hall. Uh we have some options that I listed down for you of of maybe. Uh some options for the public to consider. Uh one would be to. Um. Reevaluate the the municipal complex. Another would be to maybe a standalone police facility. And a remodel in addition here at City Hall. We still can't fix the parking, which is one of the significant challenges that we have. Um. But there may be some things we could do to extend the life of this building for a few more years. Just understand that we're we're going to put a. Very expensive Band-Aid for just a few years to kick the can down the road. But there's also street improvements still to be considered, drainage issues still to be considered. Um, we know that text dot um is gonna. The animal shelter lies in the path of the underpass. Text dot is already uh, we've already been given that map. We know that that facility is going to fall to that. So the animal shelter is going to need to be relocated. Um, and then we still got the downtown development and our our delay in pursuing. The the downtown master plan with the sidewalks and the streetscapes and and the things that we did the study for or had the plan designed for. This water line is well on its way. And once that goes through here, that's the only remaining obstacle to us moving forward with looking at funding sources for downtown. So it might be a good time to put all this stuff in front of some people, score it, and then give you guys some recommendations or some options going forward. Um. I guess with that, I I don't know. Uh other than pushing out information, I I don't know what we could have done different. Um but the bond, again, I really don't believe it's a referendum on the police or us. Um, given that there was no no real organized opposition, but. You know, I I think if the legislature is session with. Just kind of what you might call an assault on property taxes um with appraisal districts and stuff. I I think there's obviously some concern out there and. Um I would. Until the session is over, I would, you know, be careful. How we move forward uh. With things given that. But I do think that we should, the the bonds that we have been successful with in the past have been following. Uh committee, some bringing in some outside voices um. Touring facilities, taking a look at things, presenting feasibility study, getting some outside things, and then getting. The citizens to recommend some things to the council. And I think that we did not do that with the um with the municipal complex, um but I think we should probably get back to that.
You might have any questions?
No, I know we we had discussed that and we. Talked about. Knowing that the. Possibility would be for. Having backup and taking a look so. During committee.
Well, I think the more options. I I think the more options we give them, the more information we give them, the better. I think the better off they are, whether they whether they choose to go forward or whether they don't. I still don't think it's a bad thing to get the information out there. I'd also like to point out, um. Our bond counsel, Arnold Cantu, is online in Washington. If you guys have any specific questions for him, um he, you know, he'd be here. He's online to answer those questions for you.
Uh, so basically you're asking for our direction. Go ahead and do the. The committee.
I I I would think that would be my next step. If you agree, then I'll start gathering information and we'll start, we'll provide you with. I don't think it's a long process. It's three or four meetings likely and have some recommendations for you guys probably. Or information for you guys to probably July.
And that would be important because if we were going to try and call an election and there was any of the things we have to call by our uh tallest meeting. So. I I think it's a good idea to go ahead and do the committee. Anybody have any objections or?
Good thing. I guess. I thought there was. Then there was. And I feel like. The people that I spoke to did not have a clear understanding of, I mean, yes, you look at it here, like they want fifteen million dollars to do this, but there wasn't. There needs to be more ways to to lay the whole thing out as far as. It's it's not just we're looking for money to build something, but when these properties are sold. Those proceeds kept paying towards the debt.
Right.
I mean, there's just a lot of pieces to the puzzle and I feel like we're not really able to be communicating in just a newsletter. Um.
Well, I think what we're going forward, I think if if that's the direction that we go, then we will push you out much more information. We'll run that through. The bond attorneys to make sure that we're not, you know, we can't advocate. We have to be very careful. And not not crossing that line to advocate and and to try to steer and only provide. Back actual information, but I think there's a lot of it we can get out that. It just didn't get done. The methods that we chose to get out did not reach enough people. And so. This time we'll we'll include all of that in discussions, how to get that information out, what resources to use. Um. Whether it be newspaper. Social media, they're they're all things that there there is just some relevance to all of those. We'll make a much more concerted effort to get. And I think even some town hall meetings, inviting people and say. To have some conversation and explain and help people understand and and get different ideas and. What they what they want to see and some stuff. I think it'll all be things that we can do in the next quarter.
So I guess we can start. We're going to commit it. Anybody else have any questions about that? All right, uh we'll move on to the next, which is updates on the mayor and council members, updates from the city. That they from the city staff. Um. For any of you who didn't figure it out, the Joshua eighty hundred event was a tremendous success. Uh it it was just absolutely awesome. Um. Estimates are somewhere between fifty to a thousand people came through the park that day. Um, the Police Alumni Association was out there directing traffic, the law department, police officers, um everything was new as far as I'm. Uh we are going to give a report from uh Pastor Copeland, uh here just a minute to House of Senate and all that. Uh anybody else have anything they want to talk about?
Well, basically, a lot of people, when I was there and was inside our tent. And told them, you know, we're acting over with the council. If you got any questions, you can call them. Everyone that was there did very sensible. You can turn on.
I have something. Okay. Anything from the staff? Updates or anything for staff? Right.
No.
Okay, we'll move on to the other forum, presentation and recognitions. So uh at this time, I would like to take just a few minutes. Um to recognize Councilman Robert Fleming. Uh, Robert has been very involved in the city of Jock for a lot of years. Uh I know in twenty eighteen, he got appointed to the planning of zoning commission. Uh he's ran for public office. Probably uh by this his council membership. And he has been a very welcome outspoken person. Uh, I've called Robert on different occasions to talk to him about things and uh he didn't really realize it wasn't so much I was looking for an argument with him. I was looking at counsel from him. Uh Robert thinks things through a lot differently than than I do sometimes. And uh your willingness to talk and discuss. We always agree, but um I still count you as a very close friend. I appreciate everything you've done to the city, certainly. So uh at this time, go.
Don't forget.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, and stepped up in the place and did a lot of work in the city to pull a lot of people out of those bad situations, firewood. And helped out at the. Joshua Station and helped out with the apartment complex. It was having trouble with different things. So thank you for your public service outside of here.
And we really expect you to disappear. We kind of expect you to stay involved. The other thing that I greatly do is. Being a member of Sheriff's Department. Uh during these these times, uh it it takes a special kind of person, so in any form of law enforcement. And I am extremely proud of you for stepping up. Small tokens of appreciation. Please.
Cookies you gotta share.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Says, uh, for our deep appreciation, we hereby honor the council member, Robert Fleming, in recognition of many years of visionary guidance, exceptional leadership, and commitment, serving as a member of Joshua City Council. Thank you, guys. I appreciate it. I appreciate this a lot. Thank you.
Robert, that badge holder. Um, we can send that locally and have your name and whatever engraved on the front of that laser etched in there. You'll let me know what you want. We'll get that taken care of for you.
Our.
Go get some lovely.
Yeah. There you go. Well, at this time, we're going to do the accreditation certificates and license and administer the own process when we elect.
You'd have to certificate.
Yeah, you have to. And our just walk. Get that.
You would raise your right hand. Repeat after me. Mine. State your name.
I. I.
Do so I swear or affirm. That will faithfully execute. The duties of the Office of City Council. For the city of Joshua. State of Texas. And will do the best of my ability. Preserve, protect, and defend. The Constitution. And laws of the United States. So have we got?
Here. There you go. All wanted.
Where'd you go? Thank y'all.
It's been a long time to get a card.
All right. Thank you.
All right, there. Thank you. Mr. Terry, well.
Yes, sir.
Please stand and approach. Terry is uh. Been long. As our city attorney. Uh since twenty thirteen, actually. Repetitive. Thank you, Mike. Glad to make. Uh we entered into agreement with the law firm around the. Costa Copmeister. Terry is a founding partner with the firm specializing in local government issues, focusing on civil rights, constitutional law, employment, discrimination, personnel matters, and zoning and land use litigation. He offers more than three decades of municipal law experience for the city. Is licensed practice in Texas, US District Four, Northern District of Texas, Eastern District of Texas, US Court of Appeals, District Circuit, and US Spring Fourth. Terry earned a bachelor's degree from the University of Illinois. A master's degree in public affairs from the University of Texas at Austin, Lyndon B. Johnson School of Public Affairs, and is doctor of earth scrutiny from the University of Houston Law Center. Uh also found accurate fluent in German. Uh so.
Close.
You're not fluent in speaking. So on behalf of the city, I'd like to present this. Appreciation. It says, with our greatest appreciation, we appreciate well for your unwavering support and unrelated guidance and help in meeting our city to success. You're being honored with much appreciation and gratitude. This is for myself, the city council staff. Now, during the past football season, uh there were several meetings where where there was a lot of stress that we all saw. Uh and and we were a little concerned that there might be some problems within the relationship. We thought that. And so we've got a gift for each of you that we thought might kind of help smooth things over a little bit. So, Mr. Terry, I believe this is yours.
I assume you are going to find.
Have you got a player? Listen, thank you.
While we're enjoying the FTC, I'm here for TCU, both of us here.
We're gonna, we're gonna help you out with that.
When you go, it's set together as to leave for your.
Yeah, we did.
Thank you, Mike.
If I was an entertainer, this would be one of my. I've had these for about four months, waiting on the the time to get here and. When when we could do.
Thank you.
Space for.
We'll take a picture of all these.
Molly's. Graduation from TCU. She got a TCU. Jersey and on the back of it was playing hard. So. Uh this is, this is becoming something I'd like to do. Okay, so the business at hand, we're here to do consent agenda. December, discuss possible action. Only meeting is for April twentieth and May eleventh. Council meetings. And then we also have another round to discuss, consider possible action on the vote we've produced to authorize the city manager to sign all necessary documents. Um is there any to discuss these two items separately? Okay, so I will entertain a motion. I can mention the agenda items as stated. And so we have a motion by Shelley to. Accept the consent agenda items as stated, seconded by Murray. Is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? It's unanimous. Okay, we'll be our tab, regular agenda items. Item number one, public hearing on request for waiver to reduce to reduce two well setbacks. By uh on one four hundred feet and on the other one, two hundred and seventy five feet upon property located at twelve eighty Stadium Drive. Joshua, Johnson County, Texas, more more particularly known as attractive land in the Kenny Witness. Survey extract number six thirty six, TR forty county Johnson, Texas, and being approximately sixty point one four one acres. And for residential subdivision as ours roots. Mr. My mother.
Mayor and council. The toxic at sixteen point one four one acre track landed in the. Preliminary platform affected by gas well located on a property and another on the property to the west of the proposed subdivision. The property is on one single patent, potential entry. Uh, first city ordinance, a six hundred foot setback distance from fifteen gas or fifty fire for any protected use. That would be replacing. The one of four hundred and thirty four, which you use to set back two hundred feet and two hundred seventy five, which would reduce setback to three hundred and twenty five feet to allow homes to be constructed on the forty five affected lots. There is. There's a map that's attached or embedded that shows the two gas wells. Or the two that go past. That are the. On the southern. Side of the.
Uh this one for P and Z. No, okay.
That's young.
Okay, um. You have anything? They will go on with the owner representation. Still present. Okay, you have anything you'd like to say? Rest of the council. Not a whole lot. Please state your name and address.
Forty codes, four eighty one, one stop drive, Denver, Texas. So just a couple of things on here, uh major ordinance. Uh major concerns about what would make this allowable by city council or is uh life and safety concerns. Um, rather was going to keep the city from building in the way that they wanted to grow. And. The fire department being able to get to it, police being able to get to those types of things that if necessary, and residents being able to get out. Uh. Where it's located and where the waiver goes, uh it's stuck away pretty tight away from everything. The other side of the well has uh pipe abilities on it. Uh on the property, the southeast. And so. There's quite a bit of open space there already. And there's there's the proposed collector road going through this development. It will be developed full. So at night, the neighborhood street have a larger road getting out of here. So there's. A lot of access to this spot. Um, we're meeting all of the zoning requirements for lots side of the medicine. There are actually some quite a lot larger's. So it's it falls within your your land use plan. I will do it so growing the way the city says it's wanting to grow. And uh. And really the major part normally for. Anybody is life saving for it. So I looked through uh ordinances from. So I looked through, uh, ordinances from, uh, or the state and then different building codes and the state is silent to it. And, uh, the road commission is, doesn't speak of any setback limitations. And so I started through it. Uh, the fire code is in place, but it really has a code that speaks to the residential of any setback from the gas well. And, uh, it's a hundred for the fire code to build a hundred foot of gas well. So based on those items and with the organ allowing the two hundred foot setback on the gas well, uh, that, that's the request that we've made for it. So and like, uh, with the normal now said, if it's it will, uh, setback very instances are not prepared. There's like forty-five lots that can't be built on. And with the other gas lines that don't through the spot, it really makes it the tougher piece of land to be a whole lot where, so the other lands are, that have same kind rights and such, this one would kind of lose those, those rights and further reduce the development. Works. Guys, any questions?
How big are the lots you said?
How big are the lots?
Yeah.
Other one lots, so there are ten thousand foot, uh, many seventy-five feet.
And you're going to use only seven.
Forty, forty-five.
Waivers only a lot sizes?
No.
Is there, is there standards? Lot size is on one.
This, this only impacts future use. There's not any existing structures that are impacted. So so many people buying homes may be able to make a decision because.
And partly it's required that the flat says for those lots that are there that they.
A peaceful chemistry decision.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, uh, collector roads that you spoke of, there's only one that actually goes out to the current existing road. Um, so that's one road in there. One of the others goes on the piece of property that piece of property. Another one goes into, um, one of the properties that has the well on currently. True. That um, another one goes into the piece of property behind it and onto my property. Wish that ain't happened. And two of them go into Joshua Meadows. So my first and foremost concern is and I've had this stance since day one setback law. You'd said as a county. Um, I don't believe in granting a waiver to the person that's not living in that house. Um, if you were building a house to live in, I wouldn't have a problem saying sure. Give you whatever setback. Um, out there on the side of auction allowing a developer simply to make more money, build more homes, creating setback to unsuspecting future home builders or home buyers. On top of that, we just had this discussion about setbacks with Joshua Meadows and it affected seven homes up east. And we gave them a a limited waiver that the dwelling was outside the distance. I didn't even vote for that. So I just don't think it's right. To build houses that someone in the future, young, upstart families. Uh, don't really know to understand the, the ramifications of moving that close a bit away. So um, limited ingress and egress. Future development prospects. But I don't know if it happened.
What, which road is on your?
Uh, well, there's two of them. There's one that's, uh, just to the or back to three. Uh, there's one that's in the middle of my driveway. There's another one that's just to the south of Poppy Nine. And there's another one that's at the corner of the property. That's three. And I bring them out and be sure. This one. This.
This, unless I'm mistaken, I have to check it. But this is a dedicated right of way.
Yeah. Yeah.
Clear.
No, that probably.
Um, absolutely not.
Okay, from my understanding with the, with the engineer, because we, we have, we have worked with the engineer here down with the the stuff, so I don't entirely know that's the information we have.
If that, if that dotted line is the property line, then yeah, you have it using your property. That's where it is. That's, that's the collector road. That's the road that's shown in the road.
That's, that's, yeah, at one time, you know, the map showed my driveway as a, as a road. And Mr. Smith's first attempt to get this flat fast was in lieu of using my road as his road. No. It's a driver. It's not. Has no reason to anybody. Um, there's a, there's a gas well amusement that they use to get down to the road that's it's a new person.
You have a question?
Thank you.
Uh, Mayor, I think the chief had some comments to make, but just under the staff, we just didn't get it to you quick enough.
Mayor and Council, uh, with a few issues relating to gas wells that I want you to be aware of before you make your decision. Uh, these wells obviously inherently have safety issues that are making produce gases regulation. A lot of the noise, uh, these pop off valves that are on well there that they're not opening up. It sound like a gunshot. A lot of times go there, but the people, when you hear that gunshot, actually don't realize until that. So um, there's dust that occurs when they go through there, service some of the boys, obviously. Uh, also, they are allowed to maintain those wells shafts and periodically have to come in and enter them, link them up, so which produces more additional wants this also can come up or wells in that spotted thing. Which obviously is, is a great deal of changes. Well, it so. Yeah, um, so there, there's reasons why these six hundred foot numbers are fellow. I just market breaking for these things are regulated by engineers for the team field. There are devices on these things that will shut them in for emergency at first. I already constructed a bay. Just be aware of that. My job is not to, you know, to learn the odds on what, what's the odds of something like this happening. It's very rare, however. Here just like that. I'd say. So but to the standpoint, he would not be in favor of of allowing setback. Parents.
I think.
Uh, so energy. So do step. Well.
Okay. Uh, Mr. James Dorn. Uh, you had asked to speak in favor of this?
James Dorn found the property where the was located in the west of its subdivision. And I don't see any problem with having the setback from this. I would be those how many fires has had a gas well it's like here? Anybody know? See? No, sir. Okay. There are not going to be any houses built within two to three hundred feet of the well in my property. There are going to be two houses built on that property. It's not going to be developed as long as I'm alive. So that, but my children will take over. And my partner is here. She will, she's going to build a house. I'm going to build that's all that's going to be there. Let Max grow on my property. I have no problem. And if you look at the letter that when if there is Woodbridge urban oil and gas and well inspector. In last paragraph, he's going to take any of all things into consideration. I believe it would be okay to allow the reduction of setbacks to two hundred feet. It will take some time to extend the housing project back that far in the operation. My love and abandon the bill anyway before too long, especially at the price of natural gas versus MCF does not improve. If I understand it, that one well is not producing at this time. Well, my property not producing very real estate broker and have so two paddock sites that are shut in. Proud. No, this what going to be shut down. Long game. I'm going to beg you right. Appreciate. Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone that should speak, uh, against this proposal?
In, in response to the gas wells. My checks that I get, but so I didn't would actually increase over the last so.
I have, so I didn't submit a form tonight to speak.
Uh, sure.
Still a double.
Yeah, still. Oh. I'm Glenn Ruiz. I live late eighteen, Anderson Street. Of course, my property borders own property. And, uh, I don't have any problem with setback. But one thing I do have, if you look at the HUD, the HUD says three hundred feet. Who called that back? And even though the well is not produced, it still will fit the gas or thing, that's sort of a safety issue. Some things considered. But as far as a setback, I don't have.
Thanks, sir. Would you like to make a rebound? Thank you. Okay. All right, this time then we'll close the public hearing. And then we will move on to the two, just consider possible action on request for a waiver to reduce the gas well setbacks on this property. So discussion.
Yeah, I'd like to know. Does everybody get a letter on this from the city? On the floor again? This would be certain rate is correct.
Yeah, it's within a thousand.
But how, how many letters did we get back?
I think it's like a hundred and four. How, how many? We got six, uh, opposed, uh, one neutral and one four.
Yeah, so years ago, when we set this up, we were at two hundred feet. We had lengthy and long meetings with everybody, uh, essentially got the metals over these wells because they were worried about, they were blowing up at the time, causing problems. So that's why we went to four hundred, we went to six hundred. And going backwards, I don't know that safety of them wells is because they haven't got fire in the last year. Uh, give, not still a concern that we should look at.
That's kind of what I should ask as far as where did we come? Where did we get those a century? What's? What do we see in other similar areas? Is you know, is Joshua? I mean, do other communities have six hundred? Do they have two hundred? Do they have states? Recreation? Way to begin with.
I'm saying, um, you can find anywhere from about two hundred feet to about thousand to fifteen. It varies from city to city. I know one of the cities I worked with back ten years ago in the Gaff, the Bernice Silver, Free Brick Man, Mar Mound, digging up with at least a thousand foot setback. That was based on some, uh, studies by people involved in the industry as well. For the same. But you will see a variation. I believe Fort Worth may be two hundred. Uh, Dallas went to, uh, Dallas went to a thousand with a setback option, uh, reduction setbacks. But again, you'll see a wide variety of, of, with different cities.
Very, buddy. Do, you know? Like, what did we take in consideration if I came to the association?
Well, we had a, we had a fire in there, Joshua Meadows. And that kind of spurred all people to come out. That was one of the, one of the gas wells behind Joshua Meadows. Understand that's semen and everything. These are producing wells. I think if they're not incorrect for six working year. I'm impressed.
Is that a question?
No, I'm just.
Oh, because I, I don't, I don't have it.
But anyways, the people of Joshua Meadows came out in the roads because two hundred feet, they felt unsafe. So we wanted this moved up thirty-two hundred. We had, uh, one guy was a gas well expert that we hired to look after the gas well to make, remember?
I'm sure.
Yeah.
Who, who helped us? Right next to this.
And anyway, so they went to four hundred and then I think, well, what really spurred it to go to six hundred? But it was a few hours later. Six hundred feet. There's a safe precaution in case a well blew, so.
It was right after the well blew up out of West Texas, Secret Department of County. I'm, I'm thinking there were houses that were in that four hundred foot that got level by there as well. We did this pass.
But you know, it's uh, I'm not for it. You know, we, we spent lengthy time on this. We had a lot of money dumped into it. We went to six hundred for the safety and welfare of the public. And, uh, so I'm just going to stand and do it on my hands and all that.
I think um, that should be able to start the opposite ends that in, uh, here. Safety. Sorry, it's forty-five causes.
Yeah. Well, I think you know, I'm the, but our chief says no, I agree with our chief. I wouldn't live with him. Wouldn't know it.
Oh.
I agree. I wouldn't live with him. There would be a lot of this. Julie, do you have anything on you?
No, I just, we all have to run the push off.
All right, so it's, uh, for the discussion thing, so. Um, so do I have a motion? Or just relax on it?
I'll make a motion, uh, that we deny the request.
Oh, sir.
Okay, you have a motion by Murray, seconded by Mike, to deny the request for the setbacks on these wells. So further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion? She is. Never say that. Okay, um, I will beg your forgiveness, but I skip under something. And uh, I would like to, this time uh, recognize Pastor Chris Popeye from Pilate Church in St. Eucharist United. I apologize.
No, no worries. Thank, thank you, Mayor. Thank the Council for the opportunity to provide quick update. You guys already mentioned the, uh, Jochel United the event that we had, um, and as we've already heard, it was a great, great success. Jochel United is an effort to bring together our community, citizens, businesses alike, city officials, and our churches. With the glance of any headline, you can tell there's much that can divide us. We believe we can be united around God, community, and family. We did have a great day on April twenty-second, Saturday, uh, nearly three dozen vendors were there, food, games, uh, all kinds of. Uh, all kinds of, all kinds of great things for the community. And our hope is that we can expand Jocko United throughout the entire. Community. We had a follow-up meeting after this event and discussed ways that we can make next year's event, future events even greater. Uh, more food options, expanded parking, more vendors, additional participation in live music. Uh, Jocko United also came together for National Day of Prayer on May fourth. Um, we also meet the first Wednesday of each month for a time of devotion, prayer, and fellowship. We therefore build stronger relationships. Within our communities. And we are looking now at a date this fall where we can bring together. Our community yet again and unite under faith and fellowship, have a time where we can be together. As you can tell, I'm excited about coming together as a community, obviously as a pastor, uh, in the area, the faith leader. I believe that our monthly meetings, our annual events. And our dedication is see our community, our city, and our churches unite. I believe the best is yet to come for the city of Joshua, neither for Johnson County. But I appreciate the support of the mayor, the city of the event that we've had, and for future events, and I'm excited to see what God will do in the city. Questions about?
Alice, uh, if you'll correct me if I'm wrong, the food vendors were ecstatic.
Yes.
Uh, snow cone thing, I think we've already been, we're supposed to have at least five more snow. The band taxes that we have is uh, we're supposed to start at eleven, I think, or about ten. Is on his band tax. I will ask you, Chris, the other pastors, worked on this, put a lot of sweat and prayers into to make it happen. I appreciate what they did. Um, and I have heard nothing besides this confidence. Except for part.
Yeah.
And if that's.
Yeah. I think we're the show. In the last half hour, uh, and and one of the show, our, our little mission on the fan has got on and said. We come today to adopt a hit, that's. So when we want to get a parking, we need to. Yeah, yeah.
A lot of people walking on the street. They were anxious to get there and they.
Yeah.
They quit.
Yeah.
The, our police were, were out there directing traffic and that, that helped.
I hope that we can even have some maybe some of the schools and things participate in one of the live music. I think that that have more families that come. Participate, you know, one of my heartbeats, obviously, as a pastor, you know, to see churches and, and faith community go over, just. I spent twenty years in corporate America, working up, up deployed technology to eighty-two countries. And my wife's a professor at TCU. We have a heartbeat just to see people come together and the families unite and grow. In their, in their personal life, their professional life, and in their life. I believe this effort, the church is coming together, partnered with the city. Partner with the community. I believe this is a great way to.
Also, and, and I'm speaking, I'm. Turn please tell me that uh, the Wednesday, first Wednesday of the month at nine o'clock. If MCA.
Yes.
Community running is, is the month of meeting. For our whole city. And any of you that are available, then I'm sure. You'd be more than welcome to attend. We, we've got to stop focusing on what scares us far and start focusing on all we have in common. Yes, and, and that's, that's what we're trying to do here. And again, I, I appreciate Pastor Chris, Pastor Jeff. Patrick, I mean, at, at all of them just, they stepped up and they made this happen. And, you know, this was, was something that, that they may happen pretty much on their own.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, the city got involved with it. We exploited it. Uh, it is a good way to introduce people to our projects.
Yes.
And uh, we got, I think, some suggestions or feedback on uh, developing the project. We, we are excited.
And since, and recently I've been sent out an email to all of the Chamber of Commerce members. Kind of just summarizing what we did and our plans and then, and then our, our, our monthly vermin, and I've had responses back even as late as today. Other churches and even businesses, the Build on Wheels director contacted and said, I want to be there, I want to be a part of this. And that was, you know, just the first couple of responses that I sent out earlier today. So I think this thing is going to grow. And I believe that this is going to be a great thing. Thank you, Sam. I appreciate it.
Request for additional use regarding possibly two point zero acres of land in the W W R survey abstract twenty-nine. Uh, D R twenty-eight, Amity Johnson, Texas, submitted acre west F and nine seven four. To allow for the use of the bellwether and boarding salons. Higher comfortable structure that will be used within. Original farmhouse dated three nineteen twenty. Toward the west of the primary residence, building is approximately eight hundred square feet. Property is owned, equitable. Conditional use permit is allowed for use of the dog rooming and boarding salon. Purpose of the conditional use permit is allowed for the view of usage and stop. Which would not be appropriate generally without certain restrictions throughout the zoning district. Uh, which is controlled as to number, area, location, or relation to the neighborhood, both health, safety, and welfare of the community. The proposed use five with section five point two per the permitted use table for the Catholic Southern ordinance. Planning and zoning commission has they there convinced people on May first, so.
Thank you, sir. Can you have your presentations? Okay, uh, good. So would you like to do your presentation?
We're going to buy an animal shelter. We first property. With the thought process of starting this business. And right before we purchased the property, we did try to go in and talk to the city and. Maybe it's miscommunication, but we believe that we were going to be operating in-home business. Because it is a singular address and they are connected by a fence. Basically, that's not what happened, and we're just looking to get a permit to get operate out of the farmhouse that's in the west corner of the property. It's maybe a quarter acre. It is uh, fully fenced in and the business will be operated on the inside. Of that uh, facility.
Okay, uh, is there anybody who wishes to speak in favor? Anybody who gets? But everybody, good deal. Okay? At this time, we'll close the public hearing. When I report discuss the center of possible action on the proven condition use permit regarding the price of four zero acres of land. Uh, for the dog rooming and boarding salon. In the discussion.
Was to do have one of neighbors close.
We have two neighbors. Uh, they also sent out the letters, just like they did the lease agreement.
Yeah.
Neighbor to the south, actually showed at the last view. Spoke for us. Through our east.
So indoors. So I'm assuming from the boarding and boarding business, this is not something that has. Of parking need, any people showing up to the office to.
It is a sloping style, four minute movement. Usually they call a program, they'll bring the dog up. The room, the column, they, they usually there within thirty minutes, they leave next Thursday. Sometimes they do draw paths, but we do have an act on that part. It's on the little area, it'll be.
The neighbors to your home. For going against it.
There was two, one was unusual and one.
What was being these right?
Questions?
No, I'm excited by.
Well, I looked through your packet of materials and your, your business setup and explanation there. You guys thought this all the way through. I mean, this is not something you just, hey, let's do it. It, it's a very well thought out. I, I see nothing that I, I can say would be a detriment of. I think we need a good dog rooming facility, but yeah, we have in there. We've got several other around here, so. Decision's good for everybody. Alright, uh.
I'll make a motion to get through. Condition of use permit.
So Mike moved and Don seconded to approve the conditional use permit for the dog rooming. Any other discussion? All those favorable? Good news. Congratulations. Hey, one line wide of time, discuss the certain possible action on the way to the only section. The fifth and section twelve point oh, four point oh, oh, three A to include all in road and streets on which the operation is commercial motivated. Earl Road Drive, Eddie Avenue, Santa Fe Street, Cato Drive, and Little Brook Road. This grandson is not present, so.
She is attending some sort of a. Honors banquet with her child and so on. Gave her the night off. Uh, this, this request here came through Public Works Director to add. A few of these streets that they've been cracking um. Increased use in, in commercial traffic and. With the belief is, is that they're winding their way around. Um, staying off of one seventy-four, nine seventeen. Uh, reaching out to areas around Chisholm Trail Parkway and making their way in towards Cleaver. Um, not real sure. Why they would choose these paths, but they seem to be doing that. And so on a couple of these streets, um. What we've noticed, some of the streets where we've put up the new signs. Uh, that were added, I guess, two, two months ago, three months ago. They've done some more, some more counts and the truck traffic has significantly reduced. So actually just the signs being posted, I think, are making a little bit of a difference. And so he wanted to add these three streets, or these, starting at four or five of my guests. And where they're seeing increases in truck traffic, especially um. Santa Fe, Eddie, Cato. Um, those are some of the.
But he raised those other traffic increase on those streets is caused by. The increased traffic flow and the railroad always taking such long.
You know. It, it could. I don't, I don't know that we've really identified. Or it's not been conveyed to me what all of the issues are. It's, they're just, this new, these new counters that we have will. Will differentiate the size of vehicle based on as the tires hit it and they can tell if it's an eighteen wheeler or whatever it is. Uh, and, and so they're kind of watching us and, and I guess the, the end result here is. You know, a lot of these streets were just not built for this kind of traffic. And so we're trying to. Um, extend the, the life of these roads because it's gotten so horribly expensive to, to rebuild. Um, you know, the, the ones that Cato's just been uh. Almost completed. There's a few little cleanup details to do there. Fourth Street is another one. Um, that had significant. Areas that have to be rebuilt just, just because of failures, because of the, the weight of some of these trucks. Um, you know, ultimately curb gutters and concrete would be ideal, but you know, again, we're talking about. Budget constraints of what we can and can't do. It's simply just preserve the life of the truck. And some of these roads are fairly narrow. You put one of those big trucks going down it. Causes problems for the, the smaller vehicles even to get around it. There's some of the safety factor in mind too.
Question?
Is there? Santa Fe, not, yeah, Santa Fe and Cato Drive. If they're, to my knowledge, there is no opening on nine seventeen to that subdivision.
Not yet.
Not yet.
Will be. But I mean, how are these trucks going to get to that location?
Well, if they have a stop on that roadway, they can travel them. It only keeps them from just going straight through. So any, any trucks going into those neighborhoods, whether it be the new subdivisions on the, the south or the existing ones to the north. They, they can still use that.
Okay, so uh. Move that to add the streets of Rill Drive, Eddie Avenue, Santa Fe Street, Cato Drive. And a little bit to go to the ordinance section twelve point zero, four point six A. Um. I know that, that we're all holding our breath for, for the nine seventeen underpass to get started and all that. The Cato. And Santa Fe and all that's when they have heavy, heavy traffic, when they started that construction. Anything we could do to lessen it right now is going to. Clear through that and everything, so I'm, I'm all for that, so. Any more discussion? All those favorable? Discuss, consider possible action on a resolution approving the purchase of a fire rescue vehicle funded through government. Capital and operate as city management, sign all necessary documents. Mr. Peacock.
I'm going to punt this to the chief, he's going to give you some information on this uh. Vehicle. Basically, it's, as he's coming up, you are all aware of the trouble that we're having. With the engine uh, that was ordered a year and a half ago, uh, still not here. And so this is kind of a preemptive strike. There's an opportunity that's been afforded to us. Um, that falls within the lines of the C I P and the, and the plan of the fire department. And so we've kind of got an opportunity that we're going to sit down, taking advantage of. Uh, this vehicle actually will take the place of what we call squad one, that primarily has an E M S role. Uh, this vehicle is going to be set up as E M S rescue response. This actually, this vehicle uh, actually was budgeted in the C I P before I actually started this part here. And it's taken so long to the chassis, which. We finally got to the point where we started thinking, well, maybe we need to rethink this entire project. And whether the form of the original plan and order then is really what's best for the part, which I, again, stuck before I came here. So we put our officers together and discussion. Rather than what was originally planned, it's just basically I brought. Pickup type chassis. Uh, with a lot of space, good things. Uh, we decided that we would dedicate a legal script to E M S response, which is seventy-five days. If rest, so it was beautiful. Uh, contain, not the C M S, depending on all of the heavy rescue, or the rectification. Uh, slip water rescue, high and low angle rescue, et cetera. On a lot of other tools for all of us. The uh, this, this particular vehicle, this, I don't know if it's like a Chevy, but it's actually an international. Chevy no longer is in the heavy truck chassis business. So international's kind of filled that role. The original vehicle was going to be on Ford, but actually it's probably the, yeah, since COVID. Very difficult vehicle, chassis. We spoke to. Rockdale Ford today where our brush truck. It's actually chassis is going to come from, which as you know, we told that wildfire is a local company. They told us today that the lead time on Ford chassis is, is up to. Which I know is kind of off topic for tonight, but that's just gives you an idea of just how long it takes to get a test. So. What I'm asking for is this bigger vehicle, it's a custom built vehicle. Actually, they already exist, obviously. Puts uh, it was built before, now they're, you know, want to get rid of it. So it's cheaper than normal, which I know that's kind of hard to believe based on price. But it's a custom built vehicle. Uh, that box is completely custom built. It has uh various roll out shelving and so. Additions that we add to it. From what you see there, it's uh, example, we. Just a. Wrench, uh, that could be put on the front or the rear of the vehicle. So they added that. They added a heavier end grill because of that. Other little things here and there, added some uh. All lazy firemen. Kind of around. Spinning device uh that we are going to mount all of the agglott rescue. And other like. Spinning and grabbing, we can pull it out. Et cetera. We added a generator, we added a few. Also, the graphics weren't. Possible vehicle. Um. So. Long story short. Um, you asking for this table, but then you fill a. Every role. Have plenty of vehicles to add water and pumps on. For the slot, I think. This. Adds a small pump and water. But. We don't really have a brush truck, we have a brush truck. So we. Take care of the pump at home. Fastest possible. And I'm going to answer you, but.
I see a need for it. We get this like a pair of. Big red room down the road for an E M S call on that.
Yeah, stage this one, that's, that's our goal. We don't want to run out of big trucks.
And is so one side will be like an E M S sign, the other side will be the.
Uh, not, well, in, in some respects, not necessarily um. That actually that right rear department you see there, um, probably we're all in this, what it was set on the curb side. So when they get out and. Get all that stuff off the vehicle without being trapped. That's actually. That's a very large part. Uh, if you want to touch any of those little circles on the doors that will show you an overview. Part of that left one is completely passed through. Uh, that would have two levels, roll out shelves that would. Transversal power vehicles, so you could roll it out one way. Right or left side, everything. All those compartments have some form of watch. Those top three compartments, you see at the very top, center one is riding, five lane, so if you needed. Five way to use for it and say. But small ladders, other things up there too. So it would be, here it is, very large vehicle, it's very heavy chassis. That's a six point six international. House transmission. Uh, gross. Gross vehicle weight rating is twenty-two fifty and cargo rating is twenty-six, so it's valid. Carrying capacity.
Six passenger. Uh, for, for what you're going. Just depends on what we do with that. Questions?
Tell me about the financing and then in the budget part. Financing would be through government capital, where we typically finance. Fire vehicles through um that lasts this long. Uh, I've asked them for uh seven and ten year. Terms, uh, interest rate is five point four two. For seven years, five point three eight for ten years. Based on the final cost of it, we're roughly talking about. I, I would probably lean towards the seven year just. To get it in and get it out. You're probably at under fifty thousand dollars annually, uh. Which is not a significant issue and this wouldn't uh. The first payment wouldn't be due until next week, budget payment next fiscal year in C I P.
Then when the, when it be available? Uh, we're trying to pretty quickly. Sorry, pretty quickly. Yes, uh, I'm hoping within two months. Uh. Definitely within two years.
I'll volunteer five there and drive it, honey.
And that's.
Correct.
If I apply. We'll see uh, availability on this, which side, but.
Reliable right now.
Give tomorrow.
They're holding it for this meeting.
They will have to put this show in. All the. Ready for us.
We've all heard you in church.
Nine dicks. Tiny of the outside.
Questions? Hey. Angela made a motion to approve the purchase of fire rescue vehicle through government capital and operating with city major to sign all necessary documents. Shelby seconded the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All is available? Chairman.
Thank you, Chief.
I agree fully. Okay, discuss the center possible action on a resolution operating a project of the Joshua E C type B. Parks board that includes renovation of city park. Mr. Peacock.
The uh, park board met uh this month and, and reviewed the. Uh. Set of options put before them for um to do some renovations, pretty significant renovations to uh. There hasn't been anything significantly done in the park since it was built uh ten years ago. And so this, there is a plan put together that will. Uh, refurbish the splash pad with new implements uh and shade structures. New playground structures with artificial grass surfacing would get rid of all of the mulch. Um. And get rid of that headache and put in uh artificial grass, soft artificial grass. Along with shade structures, basketball court would be resurfaced and would be fenced. With a six or eight foot chandelier fence to. Keep the basketballs out of the pond and. And to help keep cars from getting on it and doing little circles and invasions in the surface, which is what's been happening. Uh, it would include uh new picnic benches, new uh outdoor grills, tables. They chose to add a, a feature of disc golf uh that will be put in. There's a proposed uh cable fencing that would surround the park. It would have gates for the ability to. Uh, close the park at night if we chose to, or close it for certain events, restrict parking for certain events. Um, security upgrades uh that include cameras and wifi. The. Funding would be uh just under a million dollars total. For all of this and um that would be. Done through the use of the issuance of a tax note through uh SAMCO. The type D, I want to, I want to emphasize that that. Would not be supported by advarum tax or property tax. That is solely supported by sales tax that goes uh. The half cent sales tax for type A and B. Um. That is well within their. Range to pay. They, they could conceivably take on much more debt and they've elected not to um. They, the public hearing was uh done along with this meeting, which is required for uh. For these type projects, for type B and X. Um, yeah, received any comments for or against as far as I'm aware. Um. But it, they are. Uh. Two playground structures for up to twenty-three months, a playground structure for ages two to five, a structure for five to twelve. Go through this whole list of things, but um. Could add a little color in the splash pad instead of having just. Plain blue with. Throw a few colors in there and same way with the basketball court, just kind of spruce thing up a little bit. Contingency money would be satisfied through the type D.
Park board unanimously approved. The project at the last meeting.
Oh, we did a community survey, didn't we, behind?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, I'm sorry. That, that's right.
We did, and they actually went with all the recommendations. Excuse, excuse me, from the citizens. We got a lot. Yeah, there was a lot. Uh, I won't be able to tell you off hand, but it was over a hundred. Yes, ma'am.
Uh, on the fence around the. Basketball court. Are you going to have a ninety degree entrance? Into it? In other words, somebody can't take their motorcycle and waddle it through it?
We, we haven't really laid it out yet, but we're. I'm, I'm not sure. It's probably something we could take a look at. We'll let them kind of tell us. Um, we, that's not what we've. Asked them to bid for us, but I don't think they're talking about a huge deal. There's cable fence that goes around also. Might help prevent some of that because it'll, it will go. Completely around the park.
I think a lot of entrance kind of a hell of a land and where it's uh walk through only and restricts. Even bicycles get to.
Yeah, I've seen a lot of motorcycles at that.
Yeah, and I've seen some bicycles, skateboards, and I mean, we're not going to stop the skateboards, but. They obviously, I think we, we could, there's probably something we can do. I just, I've just had to get with them to find out. Certainly something we could.
Uh, is it a line hole this stuff?
It is included. Oh.
It's.
It's, is it? Nine or?
I think it is that.
Yeah, I think so. We were surprised by the survey, how many people wanted that. Yeah.
Talked about earlier. Deep parking. We need to keep that in mind. Future. Expecting parking. To go along with the, these features. And the uses that we talked about with the. Doctor United, need to, need to make sure we put that in our future plan somehow.
And we're, as we go through some of this stuff, you know, parking has come up. Um, our challenge with parking is that the two largest. Spaces out there that are open space are required to be opened by the Parks and Wildlife Grant. I don't know if that, if that, if we can put parking in there, I, I don't know if we could. It's a question we can post to them. Um, now there, we are going to do, um, Public Works is going to, is do some revamping, some parking off of Spring Valley. Uh, where, where the property, but it's the railroad property. We are going to go back and rework all of that.
That's what I was thinking.
And put some, we can put about, I think, sixty cars, some sixty or sixty-five cars out there. Uh, but we need to do a little work. It's gotten, it's gotten a little rough and so that's something we're working off for next year, but if the public works is going to help us.
Okay, any other discussion? Under take motion?
Make a motion group this. Resolution. In the.
Very.
That's the parks.
Okay, so Mike move, you got to say to um.
No, never. That's the second, that's, that's eight. We're up seven, right?
To, to approve the.
Yeah, I think you said master plan by mistake.
To uh.
Operating.
Yeah. I think. Yeah. To do the renovation. We accepted. All is available? Chairman's. Okay. They have discussed the simple action resolution except for twenty-three, twenty-three master parks plan. Be calm.
The park master plan has been updated by Grant Works. Uh, the park board. Reviewed and accepted the plan at their last meeting. This. Gets us back into that five-year window with Parks and Wildlife where. Uh, grants are one of the things they require for grant opportunities. And we'll be, we will be pursuing some of those this year as soon as those open up as well. So we are. Updated and ready to go.
And this isn't substantially different from the last.
There, there are some things different, not, not a whole lot that, that you say substantial. I would say no, it's, it's not substantially different.
The, the biggest difference was the population figures. From, from the last one we did, so. Okay, any discussion? Any questions? Okay, uh, accept the motion?
I can officially um. Approve the proposed twenty twenty-three, twenty thirty-three. Okay. Awesome.
Okay, so if you don't move to. And Angela seconded to the proof or to second twenty twenty-three, twenty thirty-three. Master parks plan, any discussion? All is available? The E M S. Yeah, thank you. Discuss the center possible action on increasing the city homestead exemption. Mr. Peacock.
I heard this was something that was requested um a couple of months back and as you're aware, there's a. Timeline that we have to approve um. Increasing homestead exemption. Currently, our homestead exemption sets at five thousand dollars. Um, that is of all the cities in Johnson County that have one, they don't all have one, but for all that do, that, that's the amount. Um, so I was asked to take a look at uh the cost to. To, to increase that. And remind you that once, once it's increased, it, it can't go back. And once it's done, it's done. So. Uh, if we right now, that uh five thousand dollars. Out of. Based on current projections of um. Homesteaded properties that total twenty point three, four, five million dollars. Uh, that's about a equals the, the current homestead exemption is a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. Um, to the annual budget. Which is in place now. So if we added. A thousand dollar, just added to say we went up to six thousand dollars, that would be an additional cost of thirty-six thousand, six hundred dollars. If you went to. Added twenty-five hundred dollars for a total of seventy-five hundred exemption. Then that cost to the budget would be seventy-two thousand, five hundred dollars. And then, of course, another, uh, if you didn't win it up to ten, that would be a hundred and forty-five thousand dollar. Hit to the budget. In addition to, so it's going to actually be a hundred and forty-five thousand twice. Correct. Um. This year or last?
Wouldn't you project this off the?
This, this was projected off of twenty million, three hundred forty-five of homestead exempted properties. The, the things I would, would. I say caution, I, I don't, I don't want to. I don't want to throw that word out there and spook anybody. Um. The, the current legislative session, there are multiple deals that are related to homestead exemptions. They're mostly targeted at schools and my understanding is the big Senate Bill Three passed. Today out of the Senate. Um, and it's, it was amended to for a hundred thousand dollars instead of the seventy-five that was initially talked about. And then a, an additional ten thousand dollars for seniors and disabled. Um. Uh, individuals. So. That looks like it has legs to, to. Get somewhere in that neighborhood. Um. And so I, I guess we're also looking at, based on appraise values that came out of preliminary appraise values that came out last week. And so I I guess we're also looking at based on appraised values that came out of preliminary appraised values that came out last week. Or two weeks ago, I'm sorry. There there are sub- substantial increases in. The appraised values of properties and so, which means that there are gonna be substantial um protest values also. And if. I mean, they, some of the properties took a pretty big hit, so I I'm. I'm concerned that uh how that that's gonna play out, and so it's very hard to project what the numbers are gonna turn out to be. Um, I I was on the phone with uh Mr. Hudson last week and as expected, um. Protests are significantly higher than in years past, and I I expect that, you know, gonna gonna. Play out, so we won't have. Hard numbers since on July when the certified values come out, they are gonna be lower than what's projected now. But but they are gonna put us in a position that we, almost every scenario that I run, we will exceed. Um, that three percent or three cent um. No revenue rate, which means that uh we will reduce or what I would recommend is that we reduce our property tax. To drop below that line and and I think that with the increase in new construction. It will offset that and I don't I don't see the need to. Um, just try and stay above that no new revenue rate, we have an option, we can. We can list, run that over a three-year period, now last year we stayed at the current rate. Um, we could do that again, but I I don't think that we're gonna need to, we have enough new. Um, property tax on the books now that that I think will certainly. Put us in a position to lower the tax rate, uh and I think that we're gonna need to, because I. You know, I I know people that are. Getting taxed out of their homes and I think we all do, um, it's, you know, with this this appraisal thing is really. Out of control, I think, so it it's hard to predict what the numbers are gonna turn out to be, but um. I'm I'm almost certain that we will see a reduction in property tax, and so I I will. I would be careful how much I increased it. We can always increase it more next year, I think that we can do an increase if you want to. Uh, my recommendation would be that we not exceed the twenty-five hundred dollar increase.
How, isn't there a rule that's gotta be? Certain increments or percentage?
Only to start it.
Only to start.
It it has to start, uh, it has to start at that first amount we did when we put this in place. We can go up any amount to a maximum of twenty thousand. Uh, and that's according to uh Mr. Hudson, when I spoke with him to get all these timelines.
The thing about the the homestead exemption is everybody sees an immediate decrease in their taxes.
It helps senior citizen.
Uh, immediately.
Immediately, uh, lowered the tax rate don't help senior.
Now, one or two cents isn't, you know, two, three cents. Yeah, so so it's.
You're exactly right, they they will see this, um, a five-cent reduction and that we, I think, two years ago, we lowered it four or five cents. You know, you're talking about pets and it's it's just not.
An average of seventy dollars per household per year.
This they will see, uh, and and I mean, I will tell you in all honesty, if you if you go five, up at five and go to ten. We'll still make a budget work, we I mean, we we will do what we have to do to get there.
That's that's kind of my point, I mean, everybody in this community is having to add to their belts. And there is absolutely no reason that we shouldn't as well, and. I look at, so you're saying if we went to five thousand, that would be the the total impact on our budget would be a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars?
To this.
With a difference, the the net difference, though.
Yeah, the difference would be an additional hundred, roughly, depending on losses, that that's a closing.
I mean, I feel like we should, we should be able to. Absorb that.
We're already absorbing that, okay?
Right, I mean, I'm I'm saying a hundred and forty-five thousand dollar difference. We should be able to to make adjustments with our budget to to compensate for that, another hundred and forty-five thousand, right?
Especially with the growth that we see.
Yeah, sales tax, I think.
My my biggest hesitation is that. There's ten more days of the session and there's. There are a lot of um bills out out there that may may not fly, there are some that could. Um, but we're gonna know that answer, we have to make a decision, I believe, by July, we have to, or it has to be done in July, I'm not. So, we don't have, there doesn't have to be a decision made tonight on what that amount is. We'll get the July numbers, we'll know, we'll know better in June, even seeing what. How some of the, you know, the stuff is falling out with the appraised values and. You know, how much of that they're pulling back, and I think we'll have a clear picture of what uh the legislature is doing, so. I think you, we would have to have a number at the June meeting, because July first is when we have to. And I will put, I'm I'm gonna start, I'll start working on the budget, all the requests we're doing to me tomorrow is the deadline. I have most of them, so Monday I will start plugging numbers into the budget. And for the second one, we will plug in an additional five thousand dollars, we'll see how that works out.
Sounds good, you think? Okay, all those favor? So we just stay until June meeting. Uh, I have no kids, go to the possible action, the one that mayor pro ten for one year term.
Um, as required by charter, um, city council nominates and appoints someone to serve for mayor pro ten for one year to the next election.
Good, you might cook.
Think you're gonna get a voice in. I'm gonna have to get you a new shirt.
Discuss the certain possible action on board appointments. It's all the way.
Mayor, we have a vacancy in type A, um, Joe Halloran has moved out of the county, so he has resigned. Uh, Mr. Councilmember Johnny Waldrick would like to take his place of council, so wishes.
It's a great group, I was there for a short time, good leadership and it's really a great working group and they're they're delightful and they look forward to it.
Okay, so we have lots of next second about Dakota to uh appoint Johnny Walter. To the type A ward, in the session, I'll really favor. Okay, uh, staff reports, anybody have any questions about any staff reports? Okay, Mr. Police Chief, stand up for a second. I have a citizen approach me concerning one of your officers. And his attitude about your officer was overwhelming. Officer went above and beyond and helping assisting this person. Uh, he asked not to give any specifics, but he wanted the chief to know. How much he appreciated professionalism and the help that he gave him. Uh, it was one of those situations where an officer could have, this day I can't do anything and walked away. But they stayed there and they did what they could do, so you got officers out there, they were doing things that people were saying. Uh, I commend you for for how well your officers are being received by the public, and that comes from the leadership from the top.
Mayor, we had that officer's name?
No, I they would not give me the name and he he did not want the specifics of the situation discussed. So.
We have an award program for him when we get.
I told them that. So, uh. You might not have anything for anybody, any future agenda items? Yes, ma'am.
So, um, a few meetings back, we talked about the road straightening that lake on Henderson. You know, high school where the buses turn, um, so I saw some uh rhythms time on this. I'm very concerned, uh, because that's a private, yeah, I believe, um.
We didn't town that. We we haven't done, we would have to acquire some right of way um to to straighten that out. We have not, um, and we really haven't done much with it, engineering gave us a couple of rendering options, all of which we require some right of way. And that's kind of pretty sad, we haven't, but if if there's stuff on the trees, we didn't do it, so I I don't I don't know what they are.
Any other or any future agenda items if I'd like to see? Okay, um, we had talked, I think, about uh. Going for some of our ordinances and codes and trying to.
We have and and I've uh, we've, of course, we've got kind of a rolling list of things that that we noticed that are coming up. Um, but I'm I'm looking at more of a structured approach to this and. Uh, I'm working with Strategic Government Resources, um, which some of you may be aware of, they're a. Uh, a firm that provides um executive searches for city managers for local people. We've used them here um a few times for things, and I reached out and asked a conversation with them about bringing in a. Um, professional uh planning and development person to. Review our not only um codes and ordinances that that pertain to development services, but. Also our process, our permitting process, our fee structure, our just every everything that we're doing. Um, what can we do, be doing better, you know, things that we can change, what are we doing right that we can maybe even improve on? Uh, but more or less to give those guys over their um a resource. Um, to, without having to reinvent the wheel, Aaron has done. Um, I I've made a lot of changes and there are some things that are that we do well, there are some things that we need help on. Um, and we, you know, initially when we created that position. Uh, COVID came around and so training went away, and so a lot of the resources that. Really we've needed to bring to Aaron and his department, we we just haven't been able to do. And so I think um the the way permits are going, the way development is going, the way growth is going, it's a really good opportunity. Um, that I think that's probably the course that I'm gonna want to pursue. Uh, it's actually much less than I thought it was gonna be, we're we're talking about bringing somebody in for three months. It will be do some in-house works, some in-house trainings and make some recommendations that. There's legislation of that about the shot clock again, and so I wanna make sure that. Our processes are are getting in that shot clock, not finding ways to get around it. Um, and and I think to do that, it's a good opportunity, we're talking about about probably twenty-five thousand dollars. Uh, I would recommend funding that from the general fund or that would be the recommendation or out of reserves. Uh, and bring that person in to work, we just kind of need to pick the dates and. Work with Aaron and scheduling and and that's kind of the direction I'm going, and then we would come to you with recommendations during during that process. Um, I I think that would be probably the best best way to go, we we had an issue that that popped up. That that really just leads me to. Go more in that direction, uh, we we had a commercial building that. Um, did not get clearance through the fire department and and we caught it fortunately, uh, the fire department, the fire marshal's office will be working with that. Um, and with that. Building, that structure, uh, we met with the property owners today and explained. How it got away from us or how we, I mean, it shouldn't have happened, but it did. Um, and so we're we're gonna work to fix that, chief, uh, and. Uh, the fire marshal will work with him in the next few days, and I, th- these are the kind of things that we gotta make sure that don't happen. We have, we got, we have to stop, catch these things and make and make sure we have systems in place that prevent this from happening, this could have been. A significant issue, we're talking about a twenty-five thousand square foot building, um, that did not get reviewed through the fire department. And so, uh, and and it's in frame state, so I mean, it's, it it could have been a a significant issue.
So I guess next month then we'll we'll have your complete recommendation cost.
Uh, yes, sir, um, we'll have that, we'll, um, once that's done, then Aaron and I will sit down, we'll interview some of these. They're gonna give us a list of two or three people, uh, Aaron and I, and maybe some others, we'll meet with them, see. Which ones will be a good fit for our operation and then. We'll contract with SGR to to have that person for sixty to ninety days probably.
Well, I wouldn't report on that, any other future items?
Anything that then that they have a committee to. Discuss it or is it something you then?
I I I don't know, I mean, it may be, we we will, I think we'll get that information from them of. How beneficial, uh, we'll obviously bring that person for the council to to do some reporting and and to make some recommendations for a change. Um, we we know there will be some, I don't know exactly what they'll be, but. Uh, part of his issue, he may want to get a group of people together to talk about. Um, processes, but I I would like him to meet with some of the developers and and hear from them. What some of their struggles may be, uh. How we can improve if we can, I mean, we're, you know, sometimes delays are. When you farm out some of the stuff, you know, we don't have an in-house engineer, we don't have an in-house planner, so we have to send these things out, and so sometimes that takes time. Beyond our control, but there may be ways to mitigate some of that, and so. Hopefully that will bring all that out.
No more future items?
Information you, it'll be in the budget, the charter requires us to have that at a certain date prior to the the budget. That's a few to look at and review.